Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. I'll call to order the work session for the Sierra Vista City Council for November 7th, 2017. We have a number of items on the agenda tonight. I will mention to the council that we would probably, I'm guessing we're going to go beyond our 90-minute time period, but the P&amp;Z is in here at 5:00, so we can't go too far beyond that. So I would ask you to be succinct as you can in your comments and the way we address things today. First thing on the agenda is the November 9th council meeting. Obviously, we start with a call to order, the invocation pledge. We have some awards and presentation to NAMI. The first item is item 2-1, which is the approval of the city council meeting minutes. Hopefully, everybody's had a chance to look at those. There's any additions, completions, corrections, comments that need to be addressed on the 20 sober minutes. We'll move on. There's a resolution on an extension of premise point two. Ms. Adams, would you share that with us and give us a staff report, please?
Mayor Mueller, members of council, this is an action for an extent of premise of the liquor license for the evening of the Christmas, 2017. As per policy, the applicant was background checked by the police department. No objection to this item going forward, and if approved on Thursday, it will be returned for issuance.
Questions, Mrs. Adams? Discussion? Thank you, Mrs. Adams. We'll now move on to number three, which is another issue. Ms. Adams, would you give us a staff report, please?
I barely drink, but... Mayor Mueller, members of council, this is an acquisition of control liquor license transfer for Good To Go Stores LLC located at 2632 East Frye. It's a standard administrative practice where the ownership is changing, and so they're required to do the application post the public hearing. A background check was done on the applicant, and the police department has no objections to this item moving forward. If voted on, if approved on Thursday night, it will be returned to the state for final action.
Thank you, Mrs. Adams. Any comments or questions for Mrs. Adams on this issue? Seeing none, then we'll go ahead. Thank you, Mrs. Adams. We'll go on to item number four, which is a building code update. Mr. McLaughlin.
Mr. Allery, the building official is the principal author of the amendments, and I asked him to give you a short presentation.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, back in August of 2015 when we adopted the current building code, we also adopted the legacy local amendments to go along with those. What I'm presenting today are some changes to those local amendments. We're not going to be adding any. In fact, the purpose of this is to simplify and streamline the amendments that we have. The objective that we were looking at, the objectives that we were looking at when we went into this was, local amendments tend to cloud the code sometimes, so we're looking to eliminate downstream conflicts. Local amendments also, if you have a great number of them, they tend to, contractors, your professionals that are from outside of the jurisdiction coming in, they've got a whole big, long laundry list of local amendments to go through. So this helps facilitate their job when they come in and do work with our jurisdiction. We're also looking to lessen the economic impact of some of these amendments. Sometimes, the best intentions tend to dig deep into people's pockets, and we're trying to eliminate those that we can without any risk to, obviously, life, fire, or property safety. Some of the background behind the reasoning for the specific changes, sometimes, we actually have some forethinking people in building, and the amendments that we propose do make it into the body of the code downstream. When that happens, obviously, the amendment is no longer needed. Some of the amendments were unnecessarily more restrictive than the code, and they didn't ensure necessarily a safer condition. So there's no, we wanted to remove those kinds of things. Redundant amendments appearing here and then appearing in another piece of code, there was no sense in having those, so we removed those. Changes for clarity of understanding, frankly, if anybody can understand, if you can understand the code, then give me a call. Amendments, some of the amendments were unnecessary, given standard engineering practices. When you've got engineers doing the work, we don't need to be stepping on their toes with heavy-handed amendments. Hopefully, that was succinct enough, Mr. Mayor. Any questions?
I'm going to start with a question. Did you go and review this by yourself, or did you have comments and input from construction and the trades?
Mr. Mayor, council members, no. Initially, I addressed this with my inspector. We put it together, and then we sent it out to SACAA, and the membership of SACAA has reviewed it, and as of this date, we've had no comments.
Okay. Yes, ma'am.
Good afternoon. Could you give me an example of something you had to remove or state in a clearer way so we can get a sense of what kinds of things you had to change?
Councilmember Calhoun.
Or get rid of?
Yeah, and councilmember Wolf will greatly understand this. One of the things that we did, that we're proposing that we remove is the minimum size of grease interceptors. We felt that they were excessive and exceeded state requirements. So in that sense, that's quite a savings to a business, not having to put in a 1,500-gallon minimum grease interceptor.
I think many of us have heard from businesses about that, and so it is, that is understandable as long as it, well, you said it meets the state requirements now, as long as it does that.
Yes.
And I don't suppose, is it the fire department that oversees that, or the public works that oversees it?
Councilmember Calhoun, we oversee it under the plumbing code. Public works did, in the past, have a program that they no longer, it's no longer, perhaps, Sharon, if you have a little more history on it, it's, we don't really, we had a fog program that we don't have anymore.
Oh, we no longer have that? Okay.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, that is something we are looking at re-implementing in the future, but we had reached a very stable point with that program, with the building department overseeing the installation. We were, we were and still are getting good readings out at the plant. We have started to see a few more problems crop up with overflows, which is why we're looking at improvements to the program.
Thank you. And it's just unfortunate you picked that one. That's the one I know about.
That's okay.
But I have no intention to pick apart or micromanage those things that you've looked at. I just wanted to get a general sense of what it is that you had to get rid of to clarify the policy. So, thank you for that.
One, I appreciate the efforts. I know we talked about this several months ago, about streamlining and reducing the amount of regulation that are on development, on businesses, et cetera. You know, I was looking at this the other day, and it's roughly 14 pages of deletions, clarifications, and hundreds of single sentences saying, "We're changing this," or deleting Given, you made a statement earlier about the code maybe being a little bit too difficult to follow. Given the amount of changes, you know, 14-plus pages of clarifications and reduction, do we know why, say SACAA or other stakeholders have not commented yet with the sheer number of changes that are going into effect? Do you think that would be something that would affect the industry in a positive way, I would hope?
Councilmember Ramon, I would, I could only think that they're more than welcome to, anything that we get rid of as far as regulation, they're going to receive
Sure.
in a positive light, and I think that that's why we haven't heard anything from them as far as comments.
Yeah, at one point. I think a lot of these amendments arise from our interactions with the contracting community, so it's through that experience that we've identified the amendments that are being proposed and their actual application. So while we may not have received specific feedback on the amendments as presented, we have in our everyday permitting environment. So our proposal is informed by the feedback that we receive on a day-to-day basis.
So I know we're sending this to a 30-day public hearing.
That's right.
But we're starting from a place where at least those stakeholders have already had some input to get us to this point. Is that a true statement?
Right, right. So it incorporates the input that we've received over the years in administering the code, and we will again request feedback during the 30-day comment period and bring that to you when it's considered for final adoption. And the other thing I'll say is, you know, the local amendments supplement what's adopted in the base code. And that base code is developed by the International Code Council through a working group. So there's a lot of input that goes into the model standards that are adopted by the city and many cities in the state of Arizona. So they're very familiar to design professionals and contractors. What we're proposing for amendment are the local amendments that go beyond the base standards in the adopted codes.
Is it possible to get, as we start the 30-day public period, especially because I know we have the revitalization issue coming up here in a couple minutes, we've got what's going on with the Frye, or Frye Town annexation? Can we get a summary list of where the regulations have been deleted or reduced down to be more business-friendly so that we can go back out to the community and see if this is something that's working for them? I think the answer will be yes, but again, it's 14 pages of...
You mean out of all these?
Yeah, just the highlights. Like, what are the ones that we think are the, why are we doing some of them? Is it to, you know, bring them back into alignment, reconcile, you know, reconcile in other places? But clearly, some were done to make things more business-friendly, and given the fact that we've suspended development fees, we got the redevelopment stuff coming up, I mean, there's a marketing angle here that we need to just grab a hold of and make sure that that's going out to the public so that we can capitalize off of this.
Well, that kind of gets back to Mr. Petuchek. Are we, are we going to get some, basically, he was asking for some city PR on some of the things we're doing.
Sure.
And we need that, that needs to be definitely mentioned.
Thank you, Mayor.
So really, it's Chuck to make sure you drive that train.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I understand that these will definitely make it easier for contractors, builders, to understand what we do in this city. Is that correct? Or how things are done? Is there a benefit to the community, to the city, to the changes that have been made? What would you say would be the benefit?
Councilmember Calhoun, the benefit would be, basically, it's ease of understanding and just lessening, a little bit of lessening of regulation. The code, the code is very large. Amendments are added for local, for local purposes, whatever the conditions might be, if we have certain soils, conditions that we have to work around, or something along those lines. And so you add these local amendments to address those kinds of things and to also address the kinds of things in the code. For instance, energy storage systems just came up as a big, hot item. Tesla's got what they call a storage wall, and it's a big battery, hangs on your wall, stores from your PV system, stores electricity, and you can meter it out later. Well, those storage systems have some serious issues, and from a fire standpoint, they can be very problematic. So those are the kinds of things that you would pass a local amendment on, because right now, as of today, the code that we have doesn't really address that situation well at all.
I see. I see. Thank you. That was helpful.
Anybody else? Okay. Thank you very much. Appreciate that. We'll now move on to item number five. Mr. McLaughlin again.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, the resolution that you'll be voting on Thursday moves to establish a redevelopment area based on the findings of necessity contained in our study. The process that we went through to get to this point is documented in your memo and was summarized at the public meeting at your last council meeting. Exhibit A to the resolution shows the boundary under consideration. It captures approximately 23 acres along Frye Boulevard from North Garden to Carmichael Avenue. There are 19 tax parcels with 12 owners who have affirmatively expressed interest in being included. If the resolution is approved, staff will begin the process of drafting a redevelopment plan for planning and zoning consideration on January 16th, and city council consideration on February 8th of next year. Once these actions are completed, staff will then be able to formalize and initiate the proposed West End Partnership Grant application process. And with that, I'll take any questions.
And this would put it into effect, we're at the end of our 30-day public comment period, right? On this one? Our vote Thursday will make this effective for the next step?
Yes.
Okay. Anybody else? Yes, sir?
No, I just want to thank you very much for two years of hard work bringing this to realization, so...
I think it's one year.
No.
Seems like two years.
No.
Has it been two years?
We put the grant in for that one budget, and then it took us another year to go through this, and here's where we're at. So I think it's been close to two years, right?
We're coming up on two years, I'm sure.
Yeah. But I, yeah, two budget years. But I appreciate it.
Well, thank you.
Endurance.
Okay. Anything else? Seeing nothing, we'll move on to new business. We have a resolution adopting city board and commission practice and procedure guidelines. Ms. Adams?
Mayor Mueller, council, as you recall, this was first brought to you at your work session on September 26th, where we went through, these practice and procedure guidelines were developed to, in a similar process to the document that was developed for council several years ago, mainly to provide our commissions with some guidance on who they are, how they are, what their responsibilities, roles, open meeting law, some of the laws that dictate how they operate in their business. After the work session, when you all discussed it, some tweaks were made to make it a little more clear and a little softer, if you will, on some of the rules. And then we took the month and put it out to all the commissions to get their input on it, to see if they had any heartburn, or if there was anything that was missing that they felt needed to be in there. As a result of that, we did get comment, which was included in your packet, from the Arts and Humanities Commission, Nikki Heinrich, who had a concern about having recorded minutes only. She did offer up a possibility that if you chose to keep that as a policy, that some training would be required, and I absolutely agree that the commissions will need some guidance on how to operate a meeting and how to keep the meeting a business meeting essentially. And if they're worried about personal information getting out, then that's not the place, that's not the forum for that information to be discussed. So we will definitely meet with the commissions if they request assistance on that. And then Deborah Chatham from the library brought up that, over the years, there's always questions from commissions about commissioners who don't come to meetings. And so we provided an avenue for removal of commissioners if they miss unexcused absences three in a row, that the commission may vote to recommend that they be removed. And so that was all of the public comment we received from the commissioners, and so the item that you are voting on on Thursday is revised to include those two suggestions. The recorded minutes is still my recommendation, and I think council's consensus was that that was a good way to go for these, so that is staying in there, and I will be more than happy to arrange any training that they may need.
Any questions for Mrs. Adams? Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Adams, I'm aware that you've been to several of the commission meetings to discuss with them, what's in this document, and there may be further need. I'm not sure if you got around to everybody. Some of it is a little tricky, I think, to understand, especially the taskings part. So I think we should all feel free to let, either share that information, reiterate it from the document, or ask you to come to commission meetings to help the folks understand.
Mayor Mueller, councilmember Calhoun, absolutely. And this is not the last time this document will be changed. So as they work with it, if it turns out that there are sections that are not clear to a large amount of people or even a small amount of people, I mean, our goal is to make this something that they can use as a resource, that their new members can benefit especially from, who come on and have no background in this. So yes, absolutely. That's, we are here as a resource to back up this resource.
Thanks so much. And where will it be available to the, or to commissioners?
It'll be posted on the website under the commission information, and final versions with the approved resolution will be sent out to the commissioners electronically.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Yes, ma'am.
I had a question along those same lines. I don't anticipate any issues with this document, but in the future, if commissioners have concerns or would like to see something added to it, would it be, we would bring it to council and have a similar process as we've had right now?
Start with the council liaison.
Got it. Yes, thank you.
Okay. Anybody else? All righty. Then we'll move on to item number seven, is a reappearance for the, two reapportments to the airport commission. Any comments? Item number eight is reappearance to the youth commission. Comments? And we're still, I guess we're still waiting, I guess, P&amp;Z meets tonight, so hopefully they'll have a name to put in the...
They're deciding tonight.
Okay. All right. So that concludes the agenda for the November 9th meeting. We're next going to move to item B, which is the amendment to the development code relating to keeping of poultry in city limits. And the purpose of the, purpose of the discussion today is to come up with a consensus of councils to direct the staff on what to do. And what I'd like to do is I'd like to ask Mr. Pregler to come forward, and then we have one of the proponents that would like to address us, and then we'll have the discussion. Jeff?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. I appreciate you giving me the opportunity to talk about chickens before you once again. As the mayor mentioned earlier, this presentation will basically give you a summary of previous backyard chicken amendments, talk about the development code changes, and talk about how we got to this point today. So in recent years, and this goes back to 20, you know, 2010, the city has received a number of public requests to allow the raising of chickens within residential zoning districts. And both verbally and written comments from the proponents have indicated that there are various benefits to raising chickens in the backyard, such as reducing food allergies, knowing how the chicken was raised, where it came from, where the eggs are produced, decreases grocery expenses, provides insect control, and provides companionship. And this has been a recent trend that you will see. It's called urban chicken ranching. This has been a national trend in the past, you know, 10 years throughout the country. So in 2010, in response to the public requests, the city reviewed the development code to determine the allowance of chickens within the residential zoning districts. At that time, it was determined the development code was unclear regarding the raising of chickens. The development code stated at the time that the raising of chickens would be allowed in urban ranch zoning districts, but did not specify the allowance of chickens in any other residential or commercial zoning districts for that matter. So that made enforcement very difficult and also provided no clear city direction whether the city would allow or not allow chickens in the community. There was a little bit of clarity that was provided by the city attorney. He provided a legal opinion that stated that because chickens were specifically permitted within the urban ranch zoning district, they're therefore not allowed within any other zoning districts. And that's what we've been basing our enforcement on today. It is a complaint-based enforcement. We don't actively pursue chicken enforcement. It is simply based on complaints from neighbors. In 2011, the process began to amend the development code to allow the raising of chickens within residential zoning districts. There was a city council work session on April 11th, 2011, and at that work session, council requested staff to proceed with the amendments. On May 26, 2011, there was another city council meeting where council approved a resolution where there were some amendments provided by staff, and the 30-day public comment period was begun. And these were the proposed code amendments at the time. This is not, these are not amendments that the staff is currently proposing, but I wanted to give you an idea of what was proposed at the time. Number one, poultry, any domesticated bird, including chickens, turkeys, ducks, geese, guineas, squabs, would be allowed within the urban ranch and all single-family residential zoning districts. Two, that poultry must be kept in an enclosure to be located no closer than 10 feet from a property line. Three, the number of poultry limited to three per lot. Four, that roosters shall not be allowed unless incapable of making audible noises. Number five, poultry cannot be raised for commercial purposes. Six, poultry cannot be slaughtered or purposely killed on the property. And then finally, poultry shall be confined to the property in which they are raised. Now, following a 30-day public comment period, the city received a total of 34 comments. 25 were in opposition, nine were in support. Now, the opposition comments were as follows. There was a philosophical belief that chickens should be raised in a rural setting, not in an urban environment, concerned about smells, concerns about noise, sanitary conditions, breeding of insects and diseases, enforcement concerns, and actually, I also want to mention the attraction of predatory animals as well. So city council had a meeting on July 11th, 2011, following the 30-day public comment period, and decided not to proceed with code amendments at that time. Now, four years later, the city council, meeting on February 25th, 2016, city council did adopt a code amendment permitting agricultural animals, which includes chickens within the urban ranch zoning districts. So this is basically a definition change, where it basically included any type of agricultural animal, such as cattle, horses, pigs, chickens, within an agricultural definition, and there was a matrix that was created, which allowed these type of animals as an accessory use in urban ranch zoning districts. There have been no other changes to the development code, other than this definition change. Now, we're here tonight because there was a recent current public request for code amendments to allowing the raising of chickens. So staff is asking you for directions tonight and how to proceed with code amendments, whether to proceed amendments to allow chickens or to not pursue an amendment. So I leave it in your hands at this point.
Any questions for Mr. Pregler?
Yeah.
I may have missed your explanation of where in Sierra Vista is the urban ranch zoning district?
Mayor Mueller, councilmember Calhoun, that's an excellent question. Most of the urban ranch zoning districts are actually state land under fringes of the city limits. So if you look at the tribute area, it's actually east of the tribute area, the very eastern border of the city, and all the land is currently vacant.
So you would have to buy a piece of land to...
If somebody wanted to develop property in urban ranch, they'd go through the development process, and agricultural animals are actually an accessory use to agricultural, to agricultural use. So urban ranch is basically an agricultural zoning district, and the raising of farm animals or agricultural animals would be an accessory use to the agricultural use in these zoning district areas.
And Jeff, just for, just for my understanding and make sure I bring it, it does too, we have, the single-family residents are essentially, urban ranch is the largest, which is really more than an acre, right?
That is correct.
And the next one is what?
We have, we have single-family residential 36, which are one-acre lots.
Okay.
And then it goes down from there, down to...
And the lowest is six?
Is 4,500 square feet.
Oh, 45.
Yeah.
Single-family residential 45 square feet, that's the size of the lot.
Of the, including the house?
So, yeah.
Right, yeah, yeah.
That's the size of the lot.
A lot.
Yeah. So there's all those different districts for...
Is that a lot or not a lot?
Well, 4,500 is not a lot, but the 36, you said, or 34?
An acre is...
Well, 36...
That's about an acre.
36,000, right.
It's about an acre.
Okay.
So, and each residential district is based on the size of the lot. And the biggest lot is the urban ranch, which is more than, it's in excess of one acre.
Right. And keep in mind, urban ranch, the purpose of the urban ranch is for agricultural purposes.
Okay. Holidays, 4,500.
Okay. Anything else for Mr. Pregler?
Well, he asked a question. Oh, was that me or...
We're going to, we're going to finish with Mr. Pregler, and we have a member of the public that wants to, wants to address us before we do the discussion.
Mr. Pregler, I just want to make sure that we understand, when you're talking here and you're talking about the 34 public comments, that was from back in 2000...
that was from back in 2011, and it's not including the comments that came up after somebody addressed us to the, at call to the public, is that correct?
That's correct. The 34 comments did come about during the call to the public in 2011. But I will mention, since 2011, we've had a number of complaints regarding the use of chickens in backyards. Just to quickly go over, in 2012, 2013, there was one complaint. 2014, there were three complaints. And then we get to 2015, there were seven complaints. 2016, there were 10 complaints. And currently, in 2017, there's been eight complaints regarding backyard chickens related to noise, to smells of chickens.
How many unique complainers?
Well, I will tell you, a lot of these were dup, some were duplicates in terms of asking a separate complaint for noise, a separate complaint for smells. But I will tell you, I would tell you that most of them are unique. There might be some duplicates in there. They, they were all over the community, some north of town, some south of town. I don't have the specific address locations, but those were the numbers we got.
And if I may, just really quick, again, you said that that was a lot of complaints, and I think we talked about this previously. Do you know offhand how many complaints we get pertaining to dogs?
Mayor Mueller, Councilmember Wolf, I do not know that answer.
Chief?
That, that's usually handled by ACO, and I don't have the exact number, but it's pretty high. Well hired, well hired in the chickens, yes. Yes, that's probably more like 10 in a week.
You would hope so, because dogs are legal.
That is true.
Yeah. No, I just want to know, Jeff, what do we do in this situation? Because right now, they're obviously not supposed to have those chickens. So what are we doing with them?
Mayor Mueller, Councilmember Gray, we are going out and enforcing our, our public nuisance codes. You know, if there are noise complaints, if there are smell complaints, we can go out and enforce those types of violations. We also ask them to remove the chickens. Certainly, it is a violation of our nuisance ordinances with these smells and, and, and the noises. But again, we're not actively pursuing chickens. We're simply basing it on complaints.
Okay. And then I have one follow-up question. Has animal control been consulted on their opinion of this?
Animal control was consulted back in 2011. They have not been consulted at this point, as there's been no request to proceed with any amendments at this time.
Okay.
And if you get that, if you get that direction, you fully intend to contact them and discuss enforcement, as well as other things?
Absolutely.
Okay. Yes, ma'am.
I forgot what my question.
Well, we'll go to Bob next.
In the, in the past, did we have any consent to allow people to have pet pigs in, in the city limits?
Mayor Mueller, Councilmember Blanchard, pigs are actually prohibited within the city limits as well. They fall under agricultural animals, only allowed within the urban ranch areas.
Alicia, you remember?
It's gone.
No pressure, no pressure, okay.
Still a little confused about urban ranch areas. So if somebody is in a lot, that's a single-family lot, that's forty, how many square feet?
Larger than thirty-six.
Square, thousand square feet.
Bigger than an acre. Bigger than an acre.
Oh, that's the only group that it's, it's allowed in right now?
Correct.
Okay. So the next thing would be to, if we wanted to go with this, it would be to identify the next size?
Well, that's one, that's one way to do it, and we're not, we're not, we want to get the presentation for the, for the, from the ladies first. But again, that's one way you could do it. You could limit the smaller ones, exempt the smaller ones, and have the medium-sized ones. But again, that's a, that's kind of the discretion we have to give to Jeff to figure out. Anybody else? Okay, thank you, Jeff, we appreciate it. And Ms., Mrs. Schultz is going to come up and talk to us on behalf of the proponents.
Hello, Mayor Mueller, City Council. I first want to address, we had talked about public comment and the people that were interested in doing this currently, as opposed to what we had back in 2011. The first thing I want to present is we actually have a petition here with over 300 signatures, 80 of which are, actually have comments included. And we've also had interested parties emailing City Council. I don't know the count on how many you've already received.
Would, I gotta just ask you to pass that to the clerk so we can make a copy and put it in the record? Thank you.
Another thing I want to address, since we were already on the topic, is lot size. When I was researching this about, I started my research about eight months ago, when we first brought this to City Council in February. As far as urban ranching was concerned, when I actually looked at the zoning maps, I didn't see any urban ranching areas that were being lived on. They, they weren't, there weren't any, it was all on the outskirts, practically in county land anyway, so.
Let me, let me just add something, if I may. When that, when that designation, urban ranching, came up, one of the, one of the reasons it was is because the area immediately across from City Hall was nothing but acreage, and there were horses on that acreage. So that was part, that was actually, at one time, was an urban ranch, and it changed. So, we have had a past of actually having agricultural animals in urban ranch areas.
The purpose of me, of people wishing to have chickens isn't necessarily for agricultural purposes, which is one difference that we, one differentiation we wanted to make, is a lot of people just want to have a handful, a small flock, just as pets, and for eggs for their own family, they're, they don't want to sell them. They don't want to regulate their chickens to the, you know, Sunday soup pot, that kind of thing. They're just, they're, they're very beneficial animals to have in a backyard for gardening purposes, et cetera. I didn't want to get too much into the merits of having chickens as much as I wanted to get into how this would be enforced, and how it wouldn't be a burden on your neighbors or code enforcement officers and animal control. I have a handout here, first off. The first page actually has contained within it codes that already exist in our city codes that address a lot of the issues that people had the last time we had a public comment period. I'd like to pass this out and go over these, maybe not read through them. I'm sure everyone's familiar with the codes, but just to kind of point out that we already have a lot of things in place that do address these issues. Do, do I need to give one to?
She needs to have one for the record, and then you want to pass one to everybody else? Just, just passing to the assistant city manager, she'll pass them around for you.
Back to lot size, since I didn't finish my thought, I apologize. The amount of space required to keep a small flock of poultry per bird is five square feet of inside space in a coop, and 10 square feet of outside space. So the enclosure need not take up much room at all. It's, it wouldn't be required to have a full acre to have, you know, a handful of chickens for the purpose of having companionship and eggs for your family. Just wanted to touch on that before we moved on. So on the first page, you'll see that there are already codes in place that address smells. I've actually listed where the code is located, and also what the code says briefly. We have a couple of locations for codes on noise. And there's even a section that defines how an animal construct, enclosure is to be built as well. So, so those things are already in place. And, and the reason I bring those up is because we wouldn't, I'm trying to encourage a reasonable amendment or code, or whatever you guys, you know, end up, I'm not familiar with the whole process, but I want to encourage a reasonable code because we already have a lot of things that are in place. And then, for the sake of not being redundant or cumbersome to law enforcement officials to have it all, you know, it's, it's already in there pretty much, so. As Jeff already said, many municipalities have already added backyard poultry keeping. As of 2011, 93% of United States cities allow the raising of backyard poultry, including New York, Denver, Los Angeles, Seattle, and more close-to-home Phoenix and Tucson. I actually, during my research period, made a lot of calls to multiple municipalities. Phoenix and Tucson, different departments, animal control, police departments, what have you, because I wanted to compare the number of complaints that they were having in areas that already had chickens legal. All of them, surprisingly, all of them reported back to me that in the last couple of months, at the time I made the call, there had been no complaints about chickens. And one gentleman was kind enough to also provide me the number of dog complaints that they had had in a two-month period, and that number was 91. So they had zero chicken complaints and 91 dog complaints. I'm not saying that it's going to be that perfect here, but just, you know, kind of an example of what's going on in other places that allow them. They're not inherently farm animals, like a 300-pound pig is a farm animal, which is why I stress that they're not inherently agricultural animals in that way, at least not for the 300-plus people that are hoping that this can go through. I'm going to go ahead, on the next page, after the codes that are already in existence, I have a lot of myths and facts regarding chickens. I based this information on what commenters had concerns about previously, back in 2011, when this was first addressed. The first is, a lot of people don't know that chickens do not require a rooster to lay eggs. They do not, I'm, I'm not advocating for the keeping of roosters. I wanted to make that a very clear point. They don't need a rooster. We don't have to have roosters in the city for eggs to be produced. Another conception is that poultry is dirty and smelly. And I think a lot of people, when they think of chickens, they think of those large thousand-chicken commercial farms. Well, when you have a small flock, it's not, it, it's, it's, actually, I would say it's to a lesser degree than keeping a dog, to be perfectly honest. They, they spend hours each day dustbathing, meticulously preening themselves to maintain good hygiene. And it's not poultry itself that smells, it's animal waste that smells. And all animal waste smells, it's not specific to, to poultry. And when managed properly, no odors should emanate from a chicken yard if they're properly taken care of. And these are, again, things that are already addressed in city code that could be used to enforce that. Compared to dogs, chickens produce valuable waste that can be used as a garden amendment, which is another reason that people want to have them. Five hens produce approximately five ounces of valuable garden fertilizer, compared to the average dog that generates approximately 12 ounces of pathogenic unusable feces a day. The next fact is that chickens are noisy. I did a lot of research on this one, because I know this was a major complaint, especially with not wanting roosters, which is completely understandable. Roosters, I do have listed on here, only for reference purposes. A lot of these numbers I researched and got offline. And I also, I mean, maybe not the most accurate way to check, but I got a decibel meter on my phone, and I went around and, I went around to the Little Family Farm, and I wanted to check and see if they lined up with the numbers I was finding, and they actually did. It was more accurate than I expected. But a shouted human conversation, just for, a starting off point, is 110 decibels. A barking dog at one meter is 90 to 100 decibels. An AC unit at one meter is 50 to 75. A normal human conversation is 60. A songbird is 70 to 80. A rooster is 75, a hen at 50 to 65. And that was at their loudest. That wasn't just their normal chit-chatting, you know, normal conversations. That was when they were being chased by me with my phone. And when I recorded the background noise in my backyard, with no dogs barking or anything, the reading was at about 45 to 53. The reason I bring up the decibel level, actually, is if you look at the first page again, there's actually a chart in our noise ordinance that specifies how many decibels, it gets really specific, how many decibels between what hours these can happen, and for how, the duration of which the noise can occur. And in a residential setting during the day, noises that are no more than five minutes per hour, the appropriate level is about 65 decibels. So just kind of give you some reference. Another issue that people bring up a lot is that poultry attracts rodents and predators. Wild animals and rodents reside in every neighborhood already, and are attracted to food sources such as seed in wild bird feeders and garbage cans. Wild bird feeders in particular, which entice rodents, bats, and wild birds into yards where they can transmit diseases, are a larger draw than a well-maintained, secured coop. Skunks, havelina, coyote, and other wild animals frequent backyards, regardless of whether chickens also occupy those yards. I had a friend, this last fall, she had five rattlesnakes in her yard, and she does not have chickens. Chicken keepers are typically more aware of predators' presence simply because they are vested in protecting their flock. And as far as vermin are concerned, Jeff already mentioned insect control. They, they do eat insects, they also eat scorpions. And they'll, I, I've seen a chicken eat a mouse before. So they kind of take care of that aspect on their own. Now, this was another really big one. I did a ton of research on this one, because I know how important it was. The myth is that poultry carry disease. Not necessarily a myth, however, when it comes to issues with salmonella, I'll talk on salmonella first. Contamination is far more of an issue with factory-farmed birds that produce eggs for grocery stores, not necessarily with your backyard pets. This is because the chickens in factory farms are kept in deplorable conditions, which is why salmonella in particular is more widely associated with poultry than any other animal. However, all animal feces can carry salmonella, and in fact, reptiles have the highest numbers of the bacteria. So your, your kids' pets, turtles, and lizards, and snakes, and things would actually have more of a risk. Salmonella is only contracted by humans when something that has been contaminated by infected animal feces is ingested. And contrary to popular belief, salmonella does not just naturally occur in poultry. The bacteria will also make your hens sick. And almost all cases of salmonella can be prevented by simply preparing your food properly and washing your hands. I know back in August, there was an article about backyard poultry keeping and salmonella outbreaks. They did find that those cases were a simple case of people not washing their hands. Bird flu, avian flu. Most strains of bird flu are not dangerous to humans, and this is another instance in which keeping backyard poultry is the solution, not the problem, because a smaller flock of animals in a small, controlled setting is easier to maintain and clean up after, et cetera. The few cases in the United States that have been due to wild birds bringing it into dirty commercial farms via their droppings, and according to the Center for Disease Control, as of May 1st, 2017, there have been no human infections detected in the United States. I don't know if anyone's concerned about this one, I just kind of threw this one in here. Some people, on the internet at least, have been concerned about poultry hurting property values. It's actually, chicken keepers in urban settings are generally very proud of their flocks. They make up cute little coops, paint them pretty colors, such, you know, all that kind of stuff. It's much more aesthetic than a commercial poultry-keeping setting. There's been, there's never been any evidence that it does hurt property values. As a matter of fact, a Forbes, Forbes list of the top 100 U.S. housing markets appreciating in value showed all 10 permitted chicken keeping. I, I think I've covered everything I wanted to, oh! One more fact is, I wanted to just make sure that everyone watching or otherwise is also aware that if anything does get implemented, of course, homeowners associations would not be affected. They already have their own rules on animals. So if anyone lives in a homeowners association, it wouldn't apply to them anyway. So, in short, codes are already in place. It would not be a burden on law enforcement. Matter of fact, if, in the event that detainment would ever be necessary, there are two poultry rescue locations locally. Did the research on that, too. And my proposal for changes to be made would be, just to keep it simple, and this is just a suggestion, of course, that the term chickens be removed from the definition of agricultural animals, and that raising of backyard poultry excluding roosters be added to the section where permissible uses for single-family residents are defined. Any questions? Any questions?
I'm gonna start here. Thank you for your presentation, I think you've done a lot of good research, and we appreciate the fact that you're doing that for us. First of all, we're talking, when we say hens, we're talking chicken hens, we're not talking duck hens, we're not talking any fowl hens, we're not talking peacock hens.
My, my-
I just want to know what your proposal is.
My proposal is for hens, if you look up the definition of hens, it includes both chickens and ducks.
Yeah, and that's why I asked him a question.
My, I actually have written here, I didn't want to mention it just in case, but I have here excluding roosters and geese, because geese are really noisy, they do not need to be included in this. Ducks, they fall under all the same statistics as chickens do, one exception being that they're actually a little more hardy, they don't die as often. And, in fact, male ducks, the drakes, they are incapable of making loud sounds, their sound is more of like a raspy whisper. So I would like ducks to be included, but if we, the terminology "hens" is used, just because of the definition of hens, it would automatically include them.
And that's what I say, it's gonna have to be defined to a species, is what I'm suggesting. The other thing that comes to mind is, for a family that wants to just have eggs, let's say, or pets, whatever it may be, is the number ideally four, six, eight, a dozen?
My family of four, we are an average family of four, we eat about two eggs a day. In order to meet that criteria, we would need eight hens. I'm not saying that that's the number we have to settle on, but that would be my suggestion, would be a number of eight.
Okay. I'm glad to hear you mentioned that there are poultry rescue folks, because one of our concerns was, are we gonna have to set up a coop out at the animal control shelter?
Right.
To actually house anything, if, God forbid, something goes wrong, and we have either sick, diseased, or abused animals, then we would have to take them out there, and again, that's an additional expense-
Right.
-that we're not paying for now, really.
Yeah, that, I did that research, because I thought about, well, are they gonna just put them in a kennel, and I thought, no, that's not gonna work, so I figure-
Again, it's an expense, and, and the other problem I have, and really, this is for the chief, when we get to the point where, well, obviously, we're gonna, we're gonna use Matt's guys to do the enforcement, but if there is a, if there is a action, we're adding additional service to the police, even though it's the animal control. And when we've already gone through a process where we're no longer offering the ability to do things like funerals in the police force because of the strain on the, on the force, and the cost, and its primary cost is dealing with this, is this a cost that we can live with? And that's-
It really just depends on the complaints. We would get involved specifically if a search warrant needed to be executed-
Yep.
...at the residence, because they, you know, there's abuse of the animals, or something like that, and we would have to do that, and that's, there's no way of telling how often that would occur. We do, we do, recently, just had a deal with the chicken issue of an individual that brought in a semi-load full of them, and kept parking it around town, and we did use the rescue group to take care of those animals as well, but, so, it is something we still have to deal with anyway. We would have to deal with it now, because it is, if they are not allowed at all, and they're not gonna give them up, we would have to help code enforcement with the search warrant, so. I'm not, I'm not sure it would increase our workload a ton, except that the majority of these complaints, of noise complaints, come in after hours-
Sure.
...which that means a police officer responds to those, not, not an animal control officer.
And, yeah, but, and obviously, the police officer's gonna prioritize his calls, too.
That is correct.
And that may be the last, the last call of the day, or the tour.
That is correct.
Okay.
So, Mayor, this may sound funny, and it's not to be insulting, so you're suggesting, because we have calls, that we have a black-market chicken situation? And so, maybe what we can do is, if we obviously permit the chickens, and provided that the code's gotta get enforced anyways, but they're allowed to have chickens, then that would theoretically reduce the amount of calls you would have on chickens, because chickens are permitted, provided that there's no-
It depends, as an example, because, with the dogs, because so many people have dogs because they are permitted, we have that volume of calls. So it really depends on how many families decide to do it, and then whether or not the neighbors are cooperative or not.
But right now, if anybody even said the word "chicken," theoretically-
Right now, we wouldn't handle it, it'd go to, it'd go to community development.
Well, that's my point. I mean, if anybody said chicken right now, it's gotta get enforced.
Triggers an investigation.
Correct. So in this case, if we, we, clearly, there's chickens out there, so if we legalize the chickens, then less work for you? Potentially, less work for you.
If I may, I'm sorry to interrupt, I just wanted to mention, Jeff had said that there was no contact with animal control about this issue. I will say that I've actually had a couple of meetings with Officer Vinay. I know she's in court enforcement, but I've talked to her extensively about this as well, and she, she's open, I don't have any specifics, really, but she's open to having it. And also, chickens are diurnal, and they are not awake during the night, so after-hours calls wouldn't happen.
I was merely pointing out an analogy.
Right.
Unless they snore really loud.
I, I will say this, though, you know, given, at least, what some of us maybe have typically dealt with, with people coming up and saying that they, they're upset about the code, or the complaints, and they're just angry, the amount, I mean, you guys started this research eight months ago?
Yeah.
I think that's when you first came in, to move it along this far, to go out and do the due diligence, to get the petition signed, to do this level of research, to come in to kind of cover the basis, and also to provide solutions and alternatives for us to consider. I don't see there being any reasons why not to at least send it to a 30-day public comment.
Well, the next, the next step would be to have the code developed first.
Yeah.
And then we would go through the, there's a P and Z process, and then-
Well, to start the process.
Yeah. Glenn, did you have something?
No, I didn't.
Yes, ma'am. Do you remember?
Well, sort of, but I, to Councilmember Mount's comment, I don't think, and correct me if I'm wrong, I don't think the calls that you received, the complaints, were simply the sighting of a chicken. You were called because it was a legitimate complaint about the smell, or the noise, or, you know, whatever else is in violation of the code, so to say that allowing chickens or having a code that sanctions chickens will eliminate all infractions, I think, is incorrect, and I think it's a little bit misleading.
I wasn't being 100% serious either, I was simply saying that, also, to take it to the other extension, that we're gonna need a lot of enforcement, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, I think is just as, just as problematic of an argument to simply say that the prohibition has been lifted, and now all the black-market chickens go away, and we get a huge surplus of sales through Cal Ranch, right? So, just extending it out and making it an argument. But I agree.
Who else?
I just have a few questions, and all those of them actually have already been addressed. I just looked up the definition of hen, and I just want to make sure I'm clear, because the definition is a female domestic fowl. So, you specifically mentioned ducks, specifically mentioned chickens, but what I'm reading in the definition is that it's just a female bird, basically, so are we talking about pigeons?
Well, pigeons are already allowed in the city, but when I looked, when I looked it up, I didn't look up specifically hens, I looked up, what do you call a female duck? It's a hen. What do you call a female chicken? It's a hen. What do you call a female goose? Not a hen, you call it a goose. So that's what I'm basing my, my information on, was just those specific, I guess, Wikipedia definitions of what the females of the species are called.
Okay, this is Maryam Webster. And so you're saying that an average family of four would need eight chickens, that's what you're proposing?
Yes.
Or ducks, or?
Well, ducks, it would be less, because they're more prolific layers, but yeah, I mean, just one number for all-encompassing, I think, would-
And a chicken lays about two eggs a day, you said?
No, one.
One egg a day?
Not even a day, one every, I would say, day and a half or so, if you wanted to be specific.
About every 36 hours?
Right.
Okay.
Okay.
All right.
Bob?
Peacocks are a relatively noisy animal. I would like to see peacocks be excluded.
Well, yeah, I think they're pretty ugly now.
I think we all would.
I'll think again, argument on that, Bob. The only question I got left is for staff, so I want to thank you very much for doing your presentation, a great job, a lot of, a lot of hard work, and it's appreciated by the council, and it's gonna make staff's life easier, too.
Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak to you today.
You're quite welcome. Jeff, please, please, Jeff, if I could have you come back up. One thing we haven't talked about is the neighbors. And we all like happy neighbors, especially the members in the city council.
Yes.
And my, my concern is, there's gotta be some type of notification if we're gonna do this, to change it. If somebody wants to initiate having chickens in the backyard, I really think, through the application process, there should be an application process so that the neighbors know there's gonna be chickens, at least the current neighbors. And I would really like to see the people that want to have chickens to go visit their adjoining neighbors and get a, get a check-off before they're allowed in the process. That will keep the complaints down, save the city money, and hopefully keep neighborhoods happy. Now, there may be a neighbor or two that says, "No, no way," but that's something the two neighbors need to work out, rather than the city getting between the two neighbors at the, at the get-go. So, I just throw that out, in case we decide to go down this road, that we need to take the adjoining neighbors, the abutters at least, into consideration, and, and get them, get them hopefully onboard, so we can, we can process this. Anybody else have questions for Jeff?
Well, I don't have a question, oh, excuse me.
Go ahead, no, you go ahead, you started.
Okay, you heard my noises. I, I would disagree on that, I think that invites trouble, to ask neighbors to give you permission to do something in your yard. So, I, as nice as it would be, and I, you know, a neighbor may choose to, I mean, a person who wants chickens may choose to go talk to their neighbors, but applications and requests of neighbors, I really believe that that's too, too much. You know, if you want Jeff to look into that, that, that works, but I would, I would think that complicates the whole thing.
I concur. I don't, I think that if we're going to allow it, then we allow it, and it's allowed, and we take the responsibilities via the election process if we, if we mess it up with the community. What I would suggest, and we talked about this when we had our meeting earlier this week, or last week, that, you know, we, we had a brief conversation, we were sitting in there with, with Matt and Jeff, and here's how I feel. I believe that y'all have done a lot of work to push this to this point, and I think that the onus is on anybody who has any sort of opposing beliefs, feelings, to go out and do their due diligence, and do exactly, and let the community deal with it now. And I think my recommendation would be to simply take the suggestion that is at hand from the community with the 300 signatures, that they've clearly done their work for eight months, to take that, or some variation of it that's very close, and put that out to the public for 30 days, and let whoever opposes that or has a different idea to step forward and do their own due diligence, and do their own work, and to show up and then present all the facts or all the cases to council, in which case, we can reconcile, negotiate, fact-find, direct staff, or approve based on that. And we may find out that nobody from the public will say anything, and that's what we have, is what the public is asking for. Proceed.
I was just gonna say, I actually agree with Councilmember Calhoun, as far as the neighbors go. If it was something that we decided to let them know as a notification, much like we do dog licensing, maybe we do something along those lines, but I think that would just be another level of code enforcement that's not necessary.
Okay. This side?
I agree with the mayor on, on the neighbor things. I mean, the thing with me, and dogs and cats are very acceptable, and accepted forms of domestic pets, and I think that hens and, or chickens, whatever, are totally different. I have spoken with people in the community, and I'm, I'm hearing quite a different story than they approve, from the people that I've spoken to, but I also, my question is, is if we go through with this, and we go ahead with this, where do we draw the line? Because we're talking about having chickens for pets and for laying eggs, but, so then we have people who come to us who want to feed their children fresh milk from a goat or a cow, and that's an argument that can be made, too, for health reasons, so I'm not real sure where we draw the line here, and that's something I think should be made very, very clear.
Maybe we could use pounds. You know, if you had a 50-pound chicken, that's, excuse me.
Policia.
Oh. I was trying to think of a witty pun to say for, I'm on the fence, but can't quite think of one. I, I don't see any problem with going ahead and developing a code, and at least putting it up for a 30-day public comment period. I am on the fence. What I've seen from people is, most people that I've spoken to are also on the fence, they don't care very much either way, but there are other people who I talk to who have had experience, experiences living by chickens, who are vehemently opposed because they've had bad experiences with chickens, the smells, the noise, et cetera. So, so for me, it's, it's not really about justifying the merits of having chickens, we don't ask dog owners to justify why they want a dog, it's not about that to me, it's more about mitigating the burdens that it might put on our neighbors, and those people who might be philosophically opposed because of the tangible negative effects it could have on other community members. So that's where I stand now, and we'll see what the, the public thinks.
Bob?
I, I don't object to having chickens, particularly.
So, what I, what I hear then is, I hear a consensus of council to move ahead and develop a code that we can, we can start through the process.
Mr. Mayor, a point of clarification, so that code should be reflective of the proposal that was brought forward-
Yes.
...by the citizen, and include or not include any kind of permitting process? I don't-
Don't, don't put what the citizen asked for.
Just what was brought forward by the citizen.
And then we'll let, we'll let the public debate whether there needs to be a neighborhood notification or not.
Mayor, go ahead, sorry. Go ahead. No, I was just gonna say, I think if we're going to develop the code, it's my opinion that we should have it developed, where staff, and planning, and zoning, and whoever goes through the process. By the time we get it, it's something that staff can say, "We approve of this," because they know what they're dealing with more than, we're not the ones gonna be taking the calls for this stuff.
I think, I think the key things are, right now, I'm hearing chicken hens. I'm not hearing the peacocks, I'm not hearing any fowl, I'm not hearing all the other stuff, that's what I'm hearing.
Chickens and duck hens, is what I heard.
Yeah, I heard duck hens, too.
Well, see, here we go, we're, we're already in this discussion.
That's a, that's a point of discussion for, for future.
I have one more thing to add to that, too, from what Rachel raised. Doesn't, I know the ordinance, or the suggestion is about hens, do we need to include something in this, or is it already included, bigger animals, larger animals? Do we need to say?
Well, they're forbidden.
They're already-
Okay, so that's not an issue.
Prohibited. Not an issue now.
For this.
For now.
Okay, all right, got it, okay.
Okay, Matt?
Oh, no, I have a question.
You have, you gotta, go ahead, go ahead.
So, this is the code that's in our, the presentation?
No.
No, we don't have, we don't have, they have to come up and write the, write the code.
Yeah, but the proposal, is it the one that's included in the, in the presentation that was given today, because that says three?
No.
No, that was the previous.
That was from 2011.
That was the previous one.
Okay, so it's a different, do we have that in our packet?
We have it in a call to the public.
How about we just simply direct Matt to get with them, and let's get that all organized, and it'll look like code, and-
And that's what I thought, that's what I thought I directed. Sorry, I don't know, if I went to another planet or something, I don't know.
No, I understand.
In a different time zone.
Okay. So, and obviously, as you guys have questions, you can come back to council, and obviously work with, with the folks that are proponents, okay?
Okay.
Thank you, Jeff, thank you, Matt, thank you, ma'am, appreciate it. We're, we're now up to economic development and tourism update. Mr. Boone?
All right, Mr. Mayor, council. Okay, I've got a handful of slides, I know this has been long-awaited, as far as an economic development update, and really, it just encapsulates what I've seen over the last three and a half months, plus or minus, and kind of the initiatives that, that we've been working forward on. So, really, those are the, the five topics, I've also added kind of an activities, I was requested to do that at the very end, so I will add that. So some of this you've seen, and some of it you have not, and we'll kind of walk you through an update. So under partnerships, I just kind of wanted to give you a synopsis of where the Economic Development Office has been working. Partnerships with Sierra Vista, or the Greater Sierra Vista Chamber, we've had some great discussions about the future of business walks, expanding Good Morning Sierra Vista, and some other elements. For instance, on the business walks, the intent was to look at restarting those in January, more than likely going to a quarterly basis, and we're also looking at whether we segment or sector them. So, one quarter may be retail, one quarter may be the defense industry, one quarter may be professionals, but the intent is to, to get a hold of businesses ahead of time instead of just dropping by, and really to try to put a refined approach, one, to make it worthwhile for the business owners, and to make it worthwhile for the chamber, as well as the city staff. Same thing with Good Morning Sierra- Same thing with Good Morning Sierra Vista. Where do we go with that, and how do we continue to refine the process? It's been a great success thus far, but where do we take it and how much further can we go? Another element has been working with the Hispanic Chamber, attending their meetings and coordinating business expansion opportunities with businesses primarily Sonora, Mexico. So where can we, the city, the Hispanic Chamber, and those businesses in Sonora? So again, we've had multiple meetings along those lines. I've also partnered with Fort Huachuca in the process, or I had the opportunity to be part of the area development plan for the Libya Army Airfield Black Tower and Range Complex. So that is day two today. So again, it's one of those long-term, 20-year plans, but the intent is to make sure that, one, our airport study and those things that are developing, one, that we're aware of what the Ford is looking to do, so we have the opportunity to speak on their behalf. And then the second one is to ensure that what we're planning with the city side of the airport is synchronized. So again, another partnership that I think we can continue to expand kind of as we go along. I mentioned the OEA grant in the previous work session. Since that time, we have received the approval for the six-month extension, so if you remember those numbers. But effectively, what that does is it now offers the technical assistance program to run through August of 2019. So before, we were cut back. It does not impact the airport study, which will still close in February of 18. So that has been approved, kind of as we've gone along. We've had multiple meetings with Sun Corridor, and really, the kickoff event in partnership with the Sierra Vista, or the Greater Sierra Vista Chamber of Commerce and Cochise College is to kick off the technical assistance program on 14 November, Good Morning Sierra Vista at 7:00. So again, this opportunity to put this out. I do have flyers that have been out, so if council members would like flyers. But we pass that out on Facebook, word of mouth, and other means to ensure that the local, small, and mid-sized businesses know that they can come. Sun Corridor will be the guest or keynote speaker, so Steve Egan is coming back as the project manager, again, the former CFO of Raytheon, as well as Michael Gaiman, the marketing director for Sun Corridor. So in the grand scheme of things, that's kind of the kickoff. In concept, we're looking at the window from now through December for businesses to self-nominate, and then we're looking at a process to select them in January. And again, rough order of magnitude, we're still working through it, but to kick the physical or the engagement on the technical assistance program in March. So that would give us about 18 months of engagement with the businesses with that expertise. So we talked in previous, let's see. So just to give you an update on really the redraft or rewrite of the economic development strategy, previously known as the Plan for Prosperity. So this came up kind of in our response to the staff's solution to the strategic plan, but I wanted to lay out a few slides so that you kind of understood the methodology that we've taken. Again, I've taken several different strategic planning guidances, updates and policies, and kind of slammed it into a bit of a hybrid that the staff can work our way through. You can see our tiger team on the left, and really, the intent of that is to provide the whole of city government. And key members include community development with Matt, Laura with library and leisure services, or leisure and library services. We'll get the order right eventually. Judy from a tourism, public affairs information with Adam, Mike, and then, of course, Victoria. So we've had three physical meetings. We've got the next scheduled meeting on 16 November, so again, that's the staff element. And really, that's to take Chuck's guidance to really turn the staff on economic development. And it showed at least some initial signs that I've seen very positive. And it goes into things that, for instance, that Laura was already planning. And really, it takes our approach and how we deliver services, but it puts an economic development kind of wrapper understanding. So as we in the city provide different things, and you heard earlier about removing local codes which provide an additional barrier for someone to come in, that'd be another element of helping really us to become better or broader views of economic development. Community advisory group on the right is really attempting to get to the voice of the community, to get their feedback, to get their input. I've included kind of the broad topics of who we're going after. I don't have the names because we're still working through the invites to find out who would come. But you can see it's attempting to get across a wide variety of folks within the local business, or within the local community. Again, to give feedback, and the intent is to take the staff products that we've developed, and perhaps they're an 80% solution, and put them into the community, you know, to refine them to a 90 or 95%. Mr. Mount?
Is the intention with the community advisory group, obviously, to meet whether semi-regularly or regularly, but to periodically meet, just like you said, is to review city policy, strategic planning, economic development theory? Is that generally the case?
Councilmember Mount, it's yes and no. So really, the intent to get these groups together is specifically to go after the strategic plan. So when I look through the objectives, the strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats, again, all of those things that are in there. But again, I need someone from outside of the staff to look at that. So the intent is to meet on a quarterly basis, and again, based on the timeline, if we're trying to turn this by summer, it's probably two or no more than three meetings with the advisory group.
Is there a plan with the advisory group to at least keep minutes so that we have an idea of what's...
Yeah, I just want to interject real quick. First, you know, we had a discussion about the plan and redeveloping the plan, and it's in your strategic plan.
Right.
We want to get this group together, you know, first to help us develop the plan. It's my hope to have that done before next budget. So, you know, next spring is the timeframe we're looking at. We want to focus this group on that effort first, and then hopefully keep the group intact and get their ideas as we work forward on other initiatives.
When this group meets, will we keep minutes so that we can get at least some feedback on what's being discussed?
I don't know why we couldn't. I mean, it's not formalized, but...
I know, when it is. Once it gets going, once you start to meet, can we keep minutes? That's all I'm asking.
Sure.
Great. In that case, I'd been asking for an economic development commission, and if this group gets up that way and you keep the minutes, then that's not needed. Thank you.
No, Councilmember Mount, the intent is to take in, you know, our products, and again, to take the feedback from those folks, so...
That's fine. That works. I like it.
Awesome. And then, of course, the other opportunity we're trying to take is any speaking engagement opportunities, clubs, service organizations, again, to find the direct feedback. And if you have feedback from the community, again, I haven't turned a meeting down or turned off an email. So as people want to comment, I would encourage them to do that. Because again, at the end of the day, it's our plan across the community. So here's the planning process, just to give us some structure. And again, I tailored this based on numerous other plans and some other historic or some other strategic plan developments in different companies that have put things together. So I ended up with nine steps roughly. At this point, the staff has worked through step three, so we've gone through the SWOT analysis. We're going to return on our next meeting next week, revalidate our assessment of the SWOT analysis. And then really, the next step for us is the value proposition. And that's going to give us really our baseline. I've got a pretty interesting model that gives us the value proposition defined by the city, really into three categories, either operational excellence, which goes to low-cost provider, or whether it's fees, space, or rentals, customer intimacy, or product innovation. If you go out and look, there's multiple different models. This one actually seemed to work, and it seemed to be very clean and concise. The good news with that is that will inform really our marketing, our approach. So when we meet, and you'll see in the lower right with the quarterly advisory group in December, the intent would be to take really steps one through four to the advisory group and get their feedback and input roughly in a 90-minute period. I'm not asking them to create the sausage. I'm actually asking them to help us refine the products and give us an azimuth check to make sure that we're actually on and where we're moving forward. I can take those things and spin them onto the upper side. One, we're having a bi-weekly meeting with the city management to make sure that they're on track. And again, I can bring those back to quarterly updates to the council so you can see the working drafts and products as we move along. Step five's going to take some significant time because that goes back to identifying specific objectives across the city staff and then associated metrics to hold us accountable. So we're looking to do that at the first part of the year. And then really, the intent is to go back and define what economic development means to Sierra Vista by way of the task and the objectives. You can approach it, you know, a couple different ways, and I've read multiple papers on how to define the economic development. In this case, we're going to go back and really define it based on our, on the objectives that we see across the board. Then, of course, there's a time to refine and assemble it. I can't guarantee that it will be as pretty as the Plan for Prosperity, but the intent is to make it more functional and usable and understandable for the staff. Then, I said, March roughly 2018, kind of the timeline. I did want to have a period of comment and dissemination to ensure that everyone has their opportunity to take a look across the community. And then the intent would be to get it completed and done. The target goal is by June 20, or as Chuck said, before the budget cycle, but...
Is it 18?
Or 18. Yeah, there is a typo. That's nice. I went back in time. We're going, you said you wanted it fast? We're working it fast. So again, that's just kind of the methodology, just to keep the staff, and quite frankly, to keep us on track as we move along. Okay, there's been questions about metrics, and how do we look at the economy and how do we look at the environment? And I've pulled several cities' strategic plans, and I put the word draft on it very directly. There are many economic indicators, and I've taken a look at these five areas. A lot of them you'll actually find within a document that I know everybody's familiar with. You know, it's the economic outlook writ large. And really, the intent of this, and the recommendation is when we build this plan, is to look at these as indicators. We've looked at business licenses, potentially net new firms established as an element of this, business license, and I've got just a slide because that's one we've actually looked at the last four or five months. Elements of quality of life, workforce development, unemployment. You know, we've talked about the degrees. I'm actually trying to refine that a little bit because I think we've got some very specific skill sets, and saying that we have four-year degrees may not be the correct way to market the city. But again, I'm just kind of looking at that kind of as we go along. Education, where are schools, what it's the K-12 program talking about? Dr. Roteiler had an interesting pitch the other day about where our 12th grade graduates are going. And I don't remember if it was 49, 51, but roughly half of our group are not going to college in the next semester. So where are they going and what are they doing to contribute? So we're kind of looking at that to give us an overall feel. And then the infrastructure one, we're looking at commercial property. Now, we're going to have to balance that off with retail versus office because there's different type or light industrial. So we've met a couple times with some commercial developers. My gut tells me we will not have 100% solution on that, but I think it will give us a feel of the property either going up or down as a percentage over time. But again, the intent of this is to kind of give us a feel overall of where the indicators are going. The specific metrics will be tied to the specific staff objectives. So as we flesh this thing out, there'll be a little different element within that. So I use indicators very specifically, and then we'll look at some metrics kind of as we go along. Okay, so this was just the business license, and Mike Klein had started this before. So we kind of looked at it from June, July, August, September, and October as they submitted their business license and really trying to get a feel for where new business licenses are going. And then the intent of Mike, or for Mike to reach out to our businesses. You can kind of see where we go, you know, roughly 27 on the home-based businesses, and understand that the way the license is written, we're basing that solely on the address of the business license. So if it is in a residential area, we've made the assumption that it is a home-based business versus within the commercial zone. Then we looked at the out-of-town. Those are business licenses to come in and do a specific purpose, but they are from out-of-town. What we found was interesting, out of the 68% of the out-of-town businesses, most of them in the general contracting side. And what I can't tell you today is what does that mean and why. Really, as we put this together about a week ago, that was the one that kind of queued us up to say, "Hey, we need to take a look at, is there a particular reason?" Any reason I would give you now is only kind of my own personal opinion. And then you look down, we've averaged 30% home-based, with actually, the majority ended up in the commercial. And then we will continue to engage with the businesses, and that's where Mike's going out, attempting to link up or ensure that the business owners know that, one, we're here, and that there's a great deal of resources within the community that can be provided.
Yeah, Tony, I just have a quick comment on business license. If there are things that need to be clarified in the business license, obviously, we format the business license. So if there's things that can help, you need to get with the clerk and work on that. Yes, ma'am.
I was curious if our home-based 30%, is that typical for communities this size, or do we have higher or low? Is that something you can get for us?
Councilmember Calhoun, I don't know, but I can go back and take a look. To be fair, I'm not sure what the running average is 30% normal or not. So I'll take note, and we'll get back to you on that one.
One other question related to business size. We hear the term "small business." I know that includes a number of employees. Do you know what our small business, do you have that number? And also, is that kind of typical for a community this size? Are we doing, you know, we have higher than usual? And I'm not quite sure what that would tell us, except it seems to matter to me.
Councilmember Calhoun, I can take a look. I don't know, because again, that's kind of been the discussion with the grants, smaller, medium-sized. Unfortunately, or fortunately, depends on how you look at it, our economy, because the top employer dwarfs the next 100. I would almost argue in our community, it's Fort Huachuca, and then really, many small businesses after that. But I'll take a look at it, and again, I'm kind of walking my way through. But we'll compare to, you know, 45,000 to 50,000 towns or similar communities, and we'll take a look and see if there's consistency there or not. And Mr. Mayor, absolutely. We will, we've actually had some conversations with the clerk about where we go, especially if it goes automated, and what other information we may be able to glean in the process, so... Okay, the last slide, and then I've kind of got some notes. Again, is the draft economic development marketing plan. I've had a great conversation with Judy to look at what we had previously. And again, this is not truly informed by metrics, so I mean, I just have to be honest upfront, but I wanted to kind of build the airplane while we were in flight and get us moving kind of as we go along. You'll see the key strategies, really come back to retention, expansion. If you look at the data, you know, 80-plus percent of your growth comes from businesses already on the ground. And really, we need to understand the marketing, which goes into the second piece, business attraction. What is the sales pitch and the niche that we need to go after? I think there's some targets out there, and we've talked about things in some broad strokes, but I really do think we need to refine what we're after on the business attraction side. I mentioned earlier the Mexico, ties with Mexico, whether that is the middle class or the growing middle class of Mexico coming up and using retail, or whether that is business ties. But I think there's some great things that we have, some potential, and again, we need to take advantage of it based on the location. You'll see within the program, looking at the demographics specifically, some programs, whether it's shop local, or whether it's a push for business friendliness or business-friendly environment or community. You know, the collateral development of products, both in English and Spanish, to give us the flexibility to handle that. Adjusting the website to collect articles, taking advantage of things that's already being done in tourism, and I know Judy's up next. Event promotion, advertising, quality-of-life videos, public relations, where do we place this? I mean, I will tell you, in the 90-plus days I've been here, as I've talked to people from out-of-town, we are still trying to overcome the fact that people don't know we're here. I mean, again, no empirical data on it. I've just heard that multiple times from folks north of Tucson. One quick story, someone in the economic development community in the greater Tucson area, we were having an engagement about our value proposition. Woman was, she looked at us and says, "I've never been there, and I'm not sure where it's at." So she couldn't comment on it. So we got some work to do. And really, I think that's where the partnership with Judy and the tourism side, and I know she's going to talk next, is to take advantage of the same markets kind of as we move along. And then, of course, where do we go from a trade events? And then how do we expand partnerships, whether that's the chamber, the county, Sun Corridor, the EDF, or et cetera, or with the post? And you'll see in the do-outs, again, I really want to come back and be empirically based. I'm trying to balance the time of empirical with the staff time with Mike and I, and where do we go and engage and make things happen, and where do we track? So we're looking at, is there a tool that will help us to refine our empirical data kind of as we move along? The last one I'll leave, and there's no slide, was really kind of an activities report just to give you a feel of where we've gone, what we've done really over the last 90 days. So we've hit a couple of conferences with the Arizona Association of Economic Development. We've done business outreach. To be honest, I don't know what the number is. Mike and I have moved around and walked into businesses. I know we've reached out to the 63 new business license based on their commercial addresses. I'm going to attempt to capture the business outreach. We've had six engagement with, specifically with business owners on the Sun Corridor grant, as in phone calls, emails, or someone that's talked to me. We've engaged with the Weston Commission, Carmichael Neighborhood Association. I think those are very important and we continue. We've had four specific meetings with commercial brokers to talk about the environment and where they're going. I've had at least four meetings with the Hispanic Chamber on the business development with Sonora, at least in the last 90 days with one trip to Sonora. And Mike and Judy have made a couple of engagements down south. I've personally taken six cold calls on business inquiries, which again, I don't have a basis to tell you what that looks like, but the interest in the environment seems to be changing. We've met in partnership with community development, seven potential business owners, either working new or expansion operations. Been to two Good Morning Sierra Vista's. I've gotten emails and phone calls from two individual families on a cold call, one from Seattle, one from Chicago, that intends to move here. Again, I don't know what that means, but it was intriguing that they found us and they are attempting to, or they plan to move here within the next six, nine months. Engaged with Cochise College as well as U of A South. We've talked to the Post leadership specifically about the airport. And again, I mentioned that we're in or I'm participating in the area development plan for Libby Army Airfield, the Ranges, and Black Tower. CGO, EDF, and the like, there's been several other engagements along the way. So we've been very busy and the intent is to get us out, ensure that the community from here to Phoenix knows that we are physically here, that I'm on board, that Mike is here, and really just kind of doing that ongoing engagement. On a side note, I had at the Arizona Economic Development Conference, I had two people stop me from the Phoenix area and said, you need to get up here to make sure that people know that you're here. So we've got a couple of trips planned to physically get into Phoenix and Maricopa to make sure that they understand our environment down here, what we offer in this awesome community that we've got. So again, that goes back to the sales pitch. The guidance that I've got is to get out, to really work the sales piece, and that's what we're attempting to do. So with that, I'll pause. If you've got guidance or questions for me, I'm here to take them.
Colonel Boone, I'll hold most of my comments, I guess, until we roll up because I've been keeping a list here. I just want to say that I'm very impressed and thoroughly encouraged by the effort that's gone forward. And, you know, thank you, Chuck. I know you mentioned before that we were going to take a new direction and this is, in my opinion, you know, a very positive change. I like to see the, you know, the staff engaged in this. You guys live here, you deal with the community as much as any of us, and to get your feedback up there is impressive. And the community advisory group is something also that if it can get formalized and if we can just find a way to work those wickets out, I think it's going to be just more success that kind of comes on through with it. So thank you for all your hard work and thank you to the staff for putting up with my pigheadedness on this issue, but thank you.
Okay, are we ready for Judy? Ms. Judy?
Okay, rather than going into my tourism strategy, I think you are fairly familiar with it, but if you aren't, feel free to ask. I really wanted to kind of tackle some of the questions that have been coming up and that is, what is our extended state tax revenue doing? So I am showing just two years here, the past two years. There were some anomalies in the prior year with the hospital build that show some weird spikes and falls, and there was a lot of strange things going on last year. So I've got just the two years here, but there is additional data. Wanted to show that to you because it goes into what we're doing here next. So I took four years and I did a four-year average to see if that's consistent with what we're seeing from year to year. And we can see that it pretty much follows the same pattern. So even when we kind of normalize that over a four-year period, we're looking at consistent peaks and valleys. And that shows us when our strong periods are, when our busy periods are, and when our slow periods are. So some of the questions that have been coming up is what events are we having that could be impacting these tourism opportunities? So I've listed some of the ones that I and my staff feel are definite activities that would bring people in. There's a lot of things going on in Sierra Vista all the time, but these are things that are being promoted to outside audiences to bring people into the community. So in August, we have the Southwest Wings. That event has been going on for, I believe, 24 years. It does bring in birders, which is one of our main tourism attractions. October, we saw the gem and mineral show. That's been going on for decades as well. It's, a lot of gemologists like to come here. And then there were the high school mountain bike races over the past two years. So that's, you know, hard to say whether that's bringing people in or not. In February, the main event is the cowboy poetry event. And then in March, there's a gardening conference that we do know people come in for. In May, we have the Southwest Wings Spring Fling, which I believe is three or four years old. The hog rally was a one-off. And then Sips and Skies, which last year we called Savers Sierra Vista. We changed the name this year. And the Summit Challenge. So that shows us some peaks there in May. So April and May, we're seeing some kind of peaks over tradition. Then we want to add over that, the migration periods of birds. I did say that birding is one of our top tourism niches and we see that these peaks and valleys also fall along when we're seeing our peak migration periods. There is, of course, bird activity all year long, but those are the key times when birds are extremely active in the area. Just look outside. So then I took the extended state tax revenue, coming back to that, and I overlaid the key events that, you know, actually, we have control over. So here we have the Sips and Skies in May and then the high school mountain bike race. And I'm only showing two years here because they haven't been going on for very long. So that's just some anecdotal data. I don't know whether those increases in May are due specifically to the Savers Sierra Vista, Sips and Skies event and the Summit Challenge. And I can't say with any certainty that the mountain bike race has had a negative impact. In fact, I think it probably doesn't. So that's that information for you. I don't know. We're still looking at it and there's still some analysis to go on, but this is information that's been asked for. And then my last slide here is, I did take a look at where we are getting requests for information and I also kind of tie that in with our, our information that we're getting from social media, where people are coming from that are hitting us with social media and where our website users are coming from. So these key areas kind of cradling the United States are the key areas. And then the top area, of course, is the state of Arizona. With the Savers Sierra Vista last year, we did a really big push in the state of Arizona and we did see about a three times over the next highest interest level, whereas before it was double. So I think that that was a good thing to get that increased interest within the state. And our second one, of course, is like central California to southern California. And then third is kind of tied between Texas, particularly eastern Texas, and then the upper Midwest, Minnesota, Wisconsin, Illinois. The other areas that I've indicated here on the map also have strong showings, but we're not necessarily going into them particularly hard. I have been targeting the Pacific Northwest and then through some cooperative advertising with the Arizona Office of Tourism. It goes where they say it goes and it's going into Nevada. So that's some of the information that I can show you today. What I really like about this map is, Tony and I have talked anecdotally, and these are some of his key markets as well. So, you know, I do agree with him that just letting people know that Sierra Vista is here and all of the great things that we have here is one of our biggest challenges. That's all I have. So are there any questions?
Questions, comments for Judy?
This is fantastic. Thank you very much. And I know getting, you know, one of the things gets lost, I think, when we talk about metrics, sometimes we just have to pick a couple and then figure out how to collect data continuously over time and compare it. We're never going to have the perfect metric, but the fact that you have those, and I love the fact that you're correlating them up, and I look forward to your recommendations to us and the budget of where we should spend our money based on the data that you've collected. And that's all that I've ever asked for. So I have absolutely no issues whatsoever with your brief and with what Colonel Boone had put on the table as well. But I just want to say thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Yes, ma'am.
I also want to say thank you, but in addition to what you've shown us, and I like having the pictures to look at. It really brings it home what you're saying. I appreciate too that you put in the reading room the magazines and newspaper articles that reflect the advertising that's been going out. I'm amazed at the different, the number of different publications that Sierra Vista is in. And my next question, I guess, is, or my question is, do you have any way of telling what brings in from those various articles?
Within the print, we're not tracking that specifically. I do have my visitor center staff ask folks who call in or stop in, how did you hear about Sierra Vista? What brought you here? A lot of times, folks just want their information and they want to go out the door and have fun, so they don't want to have any conversation. So tracking it back to a specific publication is actually quite difficult. We can track our social media. We are starting to add what they call a pixel in our banner ads, allows us to track it back through Google Analytics. So we are able to do that a lot more easily with online advertising than we are with print advertising.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Thank you, Mrs. Hector. We appreciate it.
Very quickly, Mr. Mayor, because I know we're short on time. I'm hoping that, you know, the council can see some of the synergies with the approach that we're attempting to take here. You know, Judy's collecting information, we have events, those kind of things, we're trying to track that information. Of course, that ties in with, you know, what Laura's group is doing and, you know, how we can work together to improve those areas and identify where maybe we're not doing quite as well and see what we can develop to improve that. Obviously, Matt's group with code enforcement and looking at streamlining codes and those kind of things is also a very important component. We talked about that here today as well. You know, and also, you know, with what I'm trying to do with Judy's group, obviously, tourism is still a big part of what they do, but we're changing the focus to a marketing focus to support the economic development group and the sales force. So we're asking a lot of Judy's group right now. So you're going to see those changes continue to evolve over time here.
Go ahead.
I need to clarify for me. I know we're looking at retention, expansion and retention, and then we're taught, I hear sales and marketing. So we're, this is a part of the three-pronged approach to, and is the city doing this, the city staff doing this three-pronged approach? Or it seems to me, early on, we talked about three different groups kind of approaching this. How has that evolved?
Well, I think Councilmember Calhoun, you know, obviously, you know, marketing outside, you know, expansion and retention, you know, those three areas, you know, that we talked about have always kind of been there. Now it's just a matter of the approach we're taking to address all those areas. And I don't want to see a bifurcated approach where we've got, you know, one group working this, one group working that. I want to see everybody working together, you know, in these areas to see how they fit in with each of them. So, you know, we still have work to do on the plan and develop how we're going to attack all these areas. So there's still a lot of work to do, but, but I, you know, I can see it coming together. So it's going to take a little while yet though.
I think we can see that. You know, it's been a growth in developing this whole process over the last three years. So it's been three, four years, so it's looking good. Thank you.
Okay, so the next item is social service presentations. Chuck, is somebody from the staff going to brief this or is we going to let?
No, I think we'll let Gwen take the lead here.
Okay, Gwen. You got less than 15 minutes.
Well, I hear you. Here's what I want to propose. I first want to ask if there's anybody in here in the room who came specifically for this presentation? And if not, then I'd like to postpone it to when there may be a little more time to go over it.
Does anybody have any objections?
I have been waiting a long time, but I think we need a little more time to go over it.
Okay, so we'll then move on to Mr. Petichek on his executive council report. Chuck?
A piece of news, you know, we've been reporting over the past number of months, the adjudication and the trial that was to begin here in December. And just got word from our attorney this morning that that has now been put off till April. So I don't think I'll be, you know, on the witness stand till May, the way this is going now. The United States representing the Bureau of Land Management has submitted new information with regards to how the Kona Depression is impacting the river. We may have some differences of opinion on that. So now the parties get to review that information and then, you know, add our comments to that process as well. So that's going to take a number of months. We still haven't heard yet on where the forts allocation stands, so this will be an ongoing process and will continue to take, take some time. We do think we have dates for this month now on the tribute lawsuit with ADWR and Council and Cook at the Supreme Court. So that is also new information. The CCOM, we had a meeting of the executive board there with the county and that is moving ahead. The next step will be to complete the job description and then go out for the actual executive director, who will be the person in day-to-day charge of the communication center. But the building project is going pretty well. Still some issues with CenturyLink, who's providing a lot of the communications there. And that's really the main holdup, is technical. We're looking at hopefully standing it up in the April, May timeframe. So those are the main points that I have with my report right now.
Questions for Ms. Petichek on his report?
I have a question. I don't know, Chuck, if this is for you or Chief Thrasher, but going back to the police department staffing, I'm concerned about that. So I'm wondering what strategies we have in place to get officers in as our ones who are retiring or going out?
Well, right now, Ms. Gray, you know, we don't have a lot of, you know, turnover per se. I'd say, you know, we've probably got a bigger issue right now in the current state with people on light duty and those kind of things. And the current, I think we're down six right now. We might have, Adam might have an update on that because we have some people getting through the academy here.
Yeah, actually, we're down about, we just had a couple go back on FML leave. So we're at 10 actual current positions that aren't available right now.
So that is, you know, a significant issue for us. And the light duty people are people that are already in budgeted slots that are being paid. So it makes, it makes it difficult because, you know, we're still trying to recruit. We've identified some issues with regards to the competition we face from the valley cities who are continuing to increase their pay and incentives to attract people that we may or may not be able to match, as well as the competition we face from the federal agencies as well here locally. So it is a very, very tough environment and we have to put, we're going to have to put more resources, I think, into recruiting as we move forward here. I don't think there's any question about that. And we may need to, I may need to be asking you in the next budget, I usually allow an overfill of one position or whatever, but I think we may have to increase that and look at budgeting for that next fiscal year as well. So we're looking at some different strategies. Adam can maybe address the specific recruitment issues better than I can right now.
Specifically, we've done a few things to try to get more people in the door. We've modified the education requirement a little bit. You still need 64 college credits to work for us, but you can apply with 17 now because you'll get awarded 47 from Pima Community College for graduating from the academy. So we're waiting to see how kind of impact that has. We're looking at some other strategies regarding that. The other big thing that we're looking at is, is looking at recruiting teams that could go out of state and do testing out of state all in one big group instead of waiting for them to approach us and hit those areas that particularly in the winter, hit those really cold places and show them what Arizona's like. So we've got some things that we're working on regarding those specific things to try to get more people in the door. We hire roughly about one officer for every 100 applicants is what it turns out to be, roughly average.
Is that because of qualifications?
That's because of qualifications. The vast majority of them don't even make it through the first initial qualification stages. And a lot of them don't even just, they just don't show up for testing. And then, and then, of course, through the background phase, we eliminate quite a few.
Yeah, failure of background in those. Yeah, failure of background, you know, is a big thing. It's really, really, it's been a big change through the years, and we see, we see more and more of that now.
This is a problem that's going on statewide. I recently had a conversation with the Assistant Chief in Phoenix PD. They're really trying to hit laterals hard, but they won't even, they rarely look at any lateral that has more than is on because of background issues typically for their department, so. But they are, they are aggressively going after laterals within the state, which is what we're going to have difficulty comparing, competing with, because they're, they're starting laterals that have four and a half years on at sixty-nine thousand dollars a year. And so it's a, we're not going to, we're not going to compete with that, so we need to try to get those people from smaller agencies that don't want to go big agency to come to us.
Okay, and one question about the education is, when you're an MP in the military, are we looking at that at all, and what, I don't, I'm not quite sure what their equivalent is to education and our requirement?
Well, actually...
The MPs, I should say.
Actually, there were a couple of applicants we had that were specifically military that were short on their education hours that caused us to, to make this modification here in terms of the education requirement, because, you know, they were short on the hours, but, you know, by hiring them and going into the academy, they have the hours there. And then we're also being a little bit more lenient and allowing then two more years to complete the education requirement if they're short. So we have not eliminated the requirement, and I don't think we should, but we have become more lenient in terms, and flexible in terms of how we're using it.
Yeah, they do, the military, when they come out now, it's mandated by Congress that they get a military transcript, which then colleges then give credit to them for, which we do have one on board that came on, that's how he got his degree from Cochise College, was over half his credits came from his military transcript.
Great.
So those kind of things, we're still looking at options regarding that, where we can further expand the pool.
Five minutes, Christine.
I'm super quick. So with our Cox, the license, and that franchise agreement, are we looking into the possibility of providing public Wi-Fi through Cox at all for the city?
Ms. Wolf, Victoria's working this for me. I just want to say upfront, as a matter of, you know, setting the stage here, that we, we did get a six-month extension to work Cox, and we're going to have, we've had a consultant recommended to us that, because you're really embroiled in federal laws and FAA regulations, not FAA, I've got FAA on my mind today, but, but, so those kind of things are there. As I mentioned before, the, the environment that Cox is in now is much more highly competitive than the last time we did our license. So, you know, we're going to work to get what we can, you know, and what the law will allow us to do in terms of our negotiations with them. As we go through this process, we'll be meeting with council, but, you know, it's going to be tougher, is basically what I'm saying, because, because of the competition they face, and I don't know, Victoria, you have anything? Go ahead.
I don't have anything much more to add to that, except that we're just starting our negotiations, and I can keep that in mind.
Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else? And that's the executive report. Anything else for FG or H on the schedule?
No, we're running short.
I can wait till Thursday.
Okay. Seeing nothing else before the council? Meetings adjourned. Thank you.